Board of Education, Lincoln Lake Community High School District 210, Thursday, March 1st, 2018. Please stand for the vote to leave.
I am Mary Ann Saison America. It's your Republic for which a sense, one nation under God, indivisible, with every team and justice for.
You will call please.
This is class. Ms. Janet Doyle. Mr. McCutcheon. Mr. Lulow. Mr. Dan. Mr. Costas. Mr. Koki.
We have called a panel. There are three people signed up. First one is Mary Ellen Holbert.
Good evening, administrations, board. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Mary Ellen Holbert, and I'm a parent in the community. I have one student who's graduated last year from West, and I have a senior and a sophomore at West right now. My reason for speaking tonight was I had a conversation with a parent, a mutual West parent, who informed me that there was discussion during an advisory council or committee meeting on February 12th. And one of the subjects that came up was the possibility of removing restrictions of cellphone usage in the hallways during passing periods and in the classrooms. I don't have a personal opinion on this matter as of yet, as I'm currently just doing some research into it. But my concerns are whether or not there is a process that the board is going to go through before taking a vote on this. And for the consideration of what educational purposes removing cellphone restrictions in the hallways would serve, what educational purposes removing cellphone restrictions in the classroom will serve. What does existing research tell us about adolescent development, physical, neurological, intellectual, social, emotional? And what would be the potential impact of removing cellphone restrictions on student success, both academically and socially? What does existing research say about the impact of cellphone use in school on test scores, cheating, privacy, bullying, physical conflict, absenteeism, student engagement, both socially and academically? What might be these unintended negative outcomes? What controls and restrictions can be realistically enforced if cellphone use is allowed in hallways and classrooms? Will a date be set if you decide to remove these restrictions? Will the date be set to revisit, discuss, and consider the impact? And if so, how will you measure the impact of removing these restrictions, both in the hallways and in the classroom? Will you look at data such as test scores, absenteeism, conflict, fights, reports of bullying, crime? Or will it be more qualitative things like social engagement, student participation, et cetera? I think we view a cellphone as a method of communication, and primarily our generation does. But it's also an organizational tool, and can be an educational tool. But it's also a method of recording candid events with or without permission for the personal viewing of the person recording or the public posting. As I said, I do not have an opinion about this. I just know that when I asked parents and students that are in my social circle what they thought about it, I couldn't get any further than posing the question before they would respond with, "So this is what they're voting on when we have X, Y, and Z going on." So I never really could get an opinion from an adult, because they saw other things as being more important. When I talked to adolescents, my own daughters and others, their first concern was privacy. They know that pictures are taken in the hallways now, videos are taken in the hallways now, classrooms, locker rooms. It's not just athletic events and music events or social events. And they are concerned about what would be posted without their permission and what would be the social and emotional consequences. I just since Monday learned about this, have done a little bit of research on the web, and there are scholarly articles about the impact on test scores. There are scholarly articles about the changes in social interaction, both at the high school and the college level. I work in the public school system myself, and I think about the idea of how quickly the horizon has changed with smartphones being in the hands of children as young. The average is 10, but as young as six, for a variety of reasons. I just would hope that the board, prior to taking a vote, we have deep discussion about this and do some research about this, and most importantly, not rush to make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jaclyn Varner.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Jaclyn Varner. I'm 17. I go to school at Lincoln Lake East. I'm a junior. I've heard a lot of mixed conversations about the 17 people in the 17 years outside of school. And I actually have concerns about this, because it's outside and it's been on media already. It's been talked to the halls. It's been on Snapchat, taking pictures. And who knows who's seen it already? I feel like kids being outside unprotected for a cause that's really big in our society and dealing with these events, it's scary to think about when you're in school and you don't know if it's going to be a safe day or not. And I know teachers don't really have the access to go outside with these students. I'm just... Sorry. The concerns of just how much protection we're going to have outside? And is there any other possible way we can still participate in this peaceful protest without having the concerns of just being safer? If we can have it inside or located in a different area of the school where it's not so open? I love the peaceful protest, but I'm concerned with the safety, because I know safety's an issue. But how safe can we be about this? And I just don't want to have my fellow classmates be in a possible danger and have it repeat itself possibly. Thank you.
Jaclyn. We discussed this with our administrators. The administrators in each building have begun to talk to the individuals who are planning the peaceful protest. What we would like to do, as we work with the students, is to provide that safe environment inside our building. We're going to respect the right to free speech. Our teachers won't endorse or condone this either way. But I appreciate and respect your views on the safety aspect of having an exact time when every kid is going to walk out of the building. So that's something that, as a student, and obviously your courage here would be appropriate for you to express those concerns with your classmates, as I know Dr. Pollock will provide a safe environment inside for this to occur. We have an institute next Friday, so we'll be talking with the teachers. Though they've already been getting different types of resources and materials. But our teachers will not condone it in order to endorse this peaceful protest. However, we will respect the rights of our students to do so. But I completely agree with you, Jaclyn, in terms of trying to keep it inside the building. So thank you for coming out. Be sure to see Dr. Pollock about your concerns and be able to deal with the students on this.
Okay, thank you so much.
Shannon O'Shea.
Good evening. My name is Shannon O'Shea, and my concerns seem tied into what she just spoke about and at the same time trivial, but I will proceed anyway. Been a resident of Frankfurt 25 years. Our three children raised here. All three graduated from East since 1999. Been a big part of East volunteering there, all sorts of activities, even to the present day. Just had my granddaughters at the family swim on Sunday. I am a lap swimmer. I've been swimming laps three times a week at East since the day it opened, August 2001. Have utilized all the different schools when swimming pools are shut down. At this point, over the years, it's become more and more restricted due to budget concerns and other issues I may not be aware of. Right now, I swim twice a week at Central at 5:30 in the morning. It's a special program. It's just twelve of us. The doors are locked. Brian opens it only to us. The other times when I try and swim at East, it's either 7:30 or 8:00 in the morning. If you come in at 8:00, you can only enter at the front entrance. Your nervous license is scanned. You wear a pass, but you are walking through the school. And it has really struck me with her of seeing adults that they don't know who's walking through her school. But we do wear passes, and I know there's volunteers and other adults that aren't necessarily teachers. I mean, whatever needs to be done to protect the children in this climate and to assure them that the school's doing whatever it can, I'm 100% for that. Semi-retired, I do a little part-time substitute teaching. I underwent a criminal background check for that. I mean, whatever the board wants, just to make sure that we're down tight. It feels like just a couple dozen people that are love swimming. And it's minutes from my house. We have a family membership at a gym, but it doesn't have a pool. And it's just become such a happy routine. I've been going there for so long. I understand if it doesn't work out, but I'm hoping there might be some way just with minimal adjustments, you know, the few people that are love swimming. Betty's here as another person that swims and doing it for years. So just asking the board to consider if there needs to be tighter security to have public come in during school hours. All for it. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else did sign up? We'll move into our agenda then. We do have a very short and chunky agenda tonight. We have one out-of-state travel that was in your package. I'd ask if anybody wanted, maybe I can pull and discuss up a bit. Since there is only one, I don't. I've entertained a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Motion in seconds. Any additional discussion? Hearing them, both please.
Mr. Dan.
Aye.
Ms. Janet Doyle.
Aye.
Mr. Lulow.
Aye.
Mr. Kerr.
Next on our agenda is the update of the Five Cast Financial Projections.
Thank you. It's a privilege to be here tonight to present to the Board of Education the updated Five Cast Financial Forecast. Please feel free to jump in, stop me anywhere along the way. Better this is interactive than just scripting. So the Five Cast Financial Forecast, or what we commonly call the Five Cast, is a comprehensive, interactive planning tool the district uses for budget development, process, tax levy determination, and just general planning. It's an interactive planning model based on hundreds of assumptions that affect the model's output. As you know, the longer the planning horizon, the less certain the results will be, as events that affect the district's financials are always changing and evolving. This interactive planning tool can be used to develop what-if scenarios based on changes in assumptions. We will look at four different assumptions here tonight, which we recall are kind of best-case, worst-case, and a pension shift. But others could be developed as we move forward. As you know, the Five Cast is not a static document that will remain unchanged. In fact, practically outdated already before we even get a chance to present it. The basic elements that are used to develop the projections are listed here on the slide and are provided to PMA that loads them into the Five Cast software. Please note that the charts and graphs will focus mainly on operational funds only, which are education, operations and maintenance, transportation, Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, working cash and torque, and excludes debt service and capital projects unless otherwise labeled as all funds. The software has two major calculators that are used, uses historical data and current inputs, assumptions to calculate 73% of all the revenue and 74% of all expenditures. The remaining revenue expenditures are adjusted or modified by manual input based on the appropriate assumptions, for example, student fees. One of the major building blocks to the forecast is the district's current budget. This here, as you can see, is a graphical representation of the current operating funds, which you can see 73% of our district resources come from property taxes. The district levies two types of taxes. Operating levy, which is capped by the Property Tax Extension Limit Law, and the debt service, which is not tax capped. The PTAL, the Property Tax Extension Limit Law, limits the increase of our operating tax levy to the lesser of 5% or the Consumer Price Index as of the prior December on the tax and the tax on new property, or what we call new property growth. For example, the 2017 tax levy was based on the December 2016 CPI of 2.1. The debt service tax levy is set as part of the bond referendum, and is automatically levied unless abated by the Board of Education. Here is the single biggest revenue assumption in the model, which is the Consumer Price Index. For fiscal year 18, the district grew by 50% of the 2016 tax levy, which was set in October 2016, and 50% of the 2017 tax levy, which has not yet been finalized by the county, but was estimated on the 2.1%. Listed on the screen is the actual CPI for the last nine levy years, which is the green bars, and the assumptions built into the model, which are the yellow models. The orange model, or orange bars, I'm sorry, are the Wall Street Journal estimates that were made at the time by 25 different economists. The blue lines in going forward are those economists' future projections for CPI. You can see here that they didn't do too bad a job in projecting that. Here is the second largest, which is the growth for new property. Historically, you can see the green bars there. The district bank in 2010 had $65 million, and then had another peak in 2016 of $62 million. Early estimates from the Will County are indicating we should get around $51.7 million. Let's see if this actually worked. Right there, $51 million in new growth this coming year. We are projecting $50 million of new growth moving out in future years in the model.
Can I ask a question on that one? What was that official $12 billion, 15 and 16 trillion? Is there some...
I have... Yes, I have myself not actually researched it, but I have talked with another individual that has looked into this, and he indicated that it was mostly a commercial bump. So not to probably be expected, you know, since it was a big piece of property. This here represents the district's total equalized value, where you can see back in 2008, the district hit a peak of $4.08 billion. Now, yes, that's B with a billion with a B, billion dollars in equalized asset value. And if the continued growth or recovery continues to happen, we'd expect to exceed that by 2019. This is, and I want to make sure, this is total tax levy that I'm showing here, which includes debt service, and this is our estimated tax extension in millions. This is a graphic, a bar graph of that same, well, actually, tax rate, in which you can see our tax rate is actually for operating kind of flattening and declining slightly, even though our total tax dollars collected are estimated to increase. And that is to do with the strength in equalized asset value. And you can see also slight of an increase in there as our debt services is projected to increase if we do not refinance any bonds. Other revenue assumptions for local revenue have been adjusted. The main one is our CPVRT, or Corporate Personal Property Tax, has been adjusted down based on early estimates from the Department of Revenue. And otherwise, all other projections are based on the current budget. State and local revenue, state and federal revenue. The state revenue has been adjusted to reflect the new funding formula, the evidence-based funding. Now, the state is still in the process of calculating out what a current claim would be. So at this point, we're still based on the FY17 whole harmless rate, but that has been increased in there. And finally, other state grants were just left at the 18 level. Unless we, like Transportation A, we already know it's going to be down slightly, so we adjusted that down. And then finally, federal revenue is just based on current allocations that we've been notified of. Operating revenue in millions here, graphically displayed. We have, as you can see, local, state, and federal. As mentioned earlier, local is our largest portion and will account for about 89% of our total revenue. We're expecting total operating revenue by 2023 to be right at $99.3 million. Sensitivity analysis. As I mentioned earlier, you can do literally thousands of what-if scenarios on basically every variable within the thing. While it's not prudent to run all those, what it is prudent is to understand how each of the variables affect the model. These are the largest ones that we have within the model. So as you can see here, Consumer Price Index, if it increases or decreases by 1%, then it'll have a $622,000 adjustment. So let's say we, as we've shown here, we're estimating that our tax, or our CPI is 2%. Well, what happens if it comes in at 3%? Well, we would get $622,000 more. New property growth, reach $1,000 in new property, we get about $17,000. So plus or minus differ on that. And finally, any prorating on the evidence-based funding model, we're saying historically proven prorated GSA, that's about $52,000. Just as with the revenue expenditures, the biggest building block is the actual current budget. This is a graphical representation of our district's current budget. And as you can see, whoops, as you can do... There you go. And you can see here, salaries and benefits represent 74% of the district's expenditures. All right, expenditure exemptions. All salary and benefit assumptions are based on actual individual contracts for the current and adjusted for known retirees, historical changes, and/or other, or as determined by the Board of Education. So we have, there you can see, the current contracts and the ones we're working on. Health insurance is flat, and then increases at 3% moving forward. Staffing level, I will bring this. We're estimating a minus 2 FTHs for fiscal year 19, and an additional minus 3 for 2020, and then flat thereafter. This is a graphical representation of our estimated expenditures for operation by 2023. Under these assumptions, we'd expect to be at $94.53 million. Based on this same information we just reviewed, there is a breakdown between the salaries and benefits based on that staffing change and those aforementioned increases. And you can see we're estimating that our salaries and benefits combined reach about $67 million by 2023. Additional assumptions within the model. We're projecting, within the base model, we'll recall this is what we're reviewing here, our most likely scenario. We expect to see no changes in the evidence-based funding formula or in the PTAL property tax limitation. We don't expect, we're not projecting anything like property tax freeze or such. Any known retirees have been replaced with a person at MA Step 6. And then we, of course, based on working budgets being accurate. All right, so this is a graphical representation of the district's projected expenditures by their major classification. So salaries and benefits, purchase services, supplies, capital, other, and then non-capital. As you can see, we're expecting to reach about $94.5 million by 2023 for operating funds. Same way with revenue, as same way as expenditures and revenue, we do a sensitivity analysis. Reach 1% change in salary, that's about $533,000 in additional cost. And reach 1% change in health, life, and dental, that's $68,000. These are the two largest variables within the model. This is an eye test chart. No. This has been included in your packets, because obviously it's very difficult to read at this distance, but within your packets, they're each individual pro forma, which then are aggregated into a final projection summary, which is displayed here on the board.
For the total other financial sources and uses, that's a negative $172,000 in there. Is that correct?
Yeah, so...
What is in that?
Yes, let me address that. If we were using the all-funds chart, then this would actually zero out, because you would have a transfer in and a transfer out. But since we're looking at only the operation funds, per state law, you cannot pay debt service payments or lease payments from any operating funds. Has to be paid from your debt service fund, Fund 30. That is the transfer from Fund 10 to Fund 30 to pay those payments. If we had all funds, you'd see the corresponding transfer in, which would show positive 117, and be netted out to be zero.
So for 2021, we don't have anything there now? It would say zero because...
Because this is our scheduled last payment to be paid. So the only exception, and this is just because of general state, I'm sorry, Transportation A, you can pay bus leases out of Fund 40. That's the only fund that you can pay a lease out of, besides 30. So, yeah, so this is some payments on computers, and that will be paid off at the end of that year. Okay? Okay? You can see here, uh, we're projecting surpluses and here's beginning fund balances, as you'll know here, I have to look at my paper here, but you can see here, we were $256,000 in the hole at the beginning of, uh, 18. And at the end of 18, if we have a surplus, this is not including the 4.5 million in, um, projected land sales, but we'd still be looking to 3.3, 3.4 million and bringing us to a 3 point, uh, just over $3 million surplus by the end. Uh, so you see all the numbers there? Let's look at this more graphically, that'll be a little easier. So here is revenue versus expenditures. So you can clearly see from 18 to 23, under this, what we call most likely scenario, we're projecting to have a surplus during those years. This here, now this is a slight difference from what was posted on the webpage and I apologize for that, but every time you update the model, you have to manually go in and adjust, um, some variables for the blue line to calculate out your cash low point correctly. So if you're looking on the webpage, that blue purple, sorry, purple line is going to look a little better. I, that's to do with adjusting for cash basis. So anyway, you can see here, uh, right here was our absolute low point and fund balance in 16, coming in at our first surplus in 17 to bring us almost out of the negative. And by 18, we hope to actually have a positive operating fund balance. Now, for some people, they might say, well, how is that possible? The district have a negative fund balance. Well, remember, we have two restricted funds, debt service and capital projects. They both have funds in there and then, of course, we borrow a maximum of 27 million to make payroll between those tight parts. So anyway, here's our low, whoops, our low, uh, our low projected cash flow. See right there, we're projecting to be about 23 million short in 18 and then 19 all the way. If these go into fruition, we'd be about 85 million short by 2023.
But whoops, and this doesn't include the tax, does it?
No, this does not include the 4.5 million sale. This is just a lot of projected five years, so it just shows that same graph, it just cuts off those prior histories. This here is the projected surplus for the operating funds that was in that little report was difficult to read. And this here's our estimated ending fund balance. Now, I just want to point out that if all of that went as planned, by 2023, we would have a fund balance of about 23% of operating expenses. The board's goal is 33%. Okay, now let's talk about one of the first worst case scenarios. And that would be a pension cost shift as proposed by Governor Rowner. This chart here represents the difference between our TRS, well, this is actually total benefits, but the only thing that's changed, all assumptions on benefits were held the same with the exception of he is proposing that 2.5% of the TRS pension payment be shifted annually to the school district. So that's 2.5 first year, 5% second year, 7.5. You get a third of 10%, which is what the state says they're currently paying. So this difference here is made up of that TRS additional payment. In the next five years, if that shift was to happen, it would cost the district 25.1 million dollars. So what's that do to us? Well, it basically undoes everything we've been working to do. So if we did nothing, if we didn't make any changes, if we didn't make profits, if we just went ahead with operations as I showed you, we would immediately start going, burning into a deficit and now our fund balance would be cut down negative 3.2 million by fiscal 2023 and we'd be borrowing about $33 million. That's if we could get somebody to loan into it. I think the important message here is if you happen to be speaking to any of your legislators, which I wish one of them was here at last meeting, which we're here tonight, you might just mention to them that a pension cost shift for a district, um, our district would be pretty detrimental. This is just showing the fund balance and what would happen in the last five years. Now, let's take even a worst case scenario. Let's say that, uh, that 2% CPI is too high and we really should use the average of the last 10 years. Well, the CPI for the last 10 years average is 1.62%. So we built the scenario based on that. Now, here's the Wall Street Journal assumptions and as you can see, they've not been too bad. So, um, that, this doesn't seem much like a likely scenario, but we ought to look at it. So with looking at that, it just makes it even worse and it brings down, we lose another 2.17 million dollars worth of revenue, bringing our overall loss to the fund balance of 27.3 million. So it brings us down to 5.4 million.
Can you go back to the slide before that? So you mentioned the Wall Street Journal estimates, so you're.
Yeah.
They throw a little bit of rainbows in the reports on it there for me. How often do they adjust their estimate?
Uh, that's an interesting question. Um, I could research that. I mean, every time I just go to the webpage and they've just got up forecasts out there. Like right now, they're forecasting clear out to 2021. And so, I mean, but you're at, to ask the question, these numbers are what they projected at the time I put them into the presentations.
Right, but I mean, I guess my point is, when was their last estimate?
Yeah, so this estimate right here was, um, made about three weeks ago, two weeks ago.
But will these get adjusted?
Right, yeah, and I'll keep adjusting, I mean, I keep these future out ones, I'll keep adjusting those as we go and, you know, kind of keep an eye on that. So, that answer the question?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, that those estimates could come down.
Right, right, right.
Just add the rest of it.
They're, they're exactly right, there's estimates. Okay, so the 1.62, that is the 10-year average. You don't see it on the slide, but what really pulls that down is just right back there was on the slide, remember we had the point one? So that was quite an anomaly, but it was out there, so it really pulls down that 10-year average. So based on that, putting in CPI at 1.62, it takes, decreases the revenue by another 2.17 million, a total loss between either additional expenditure or lost revenue, a total change on the fund balance of 27.3 million over the five years. Uh, would bring us down to maybe about 35 million in cash. And that's just a graph of that. Okay, so, um, kind of if you will, the one, the base model is kind of like what we think will be, this is like, okay, what's our best case scenario? So this would be no pension shift, no change in legislature, uh, legislation and really a higher CPI. So if we added a higher CPI at this, what the Wall Street Journal is currently projecting, how much would that really shift our model? Well, what it would do, it would shift our model by 1.5 million in additional revenue above that kind of most likely scenario I showed you. So now we're, all right, by 2023, we might only need to borrow about 7.3 million and we have about 23 million in the, um, fund balance. And that's just a representation of that. With that, that opens up for questions. In your board packets was a reconciliation that I know you guys asked for last time. So it reconciles the base model for 2019 to the 2018. And this would be the piece of information that we would like to discuss when we move to the next agenda item, which would be kind of giving us our marching order for getting started on the 2019 budget. Of course, we'll just get that, uh, built, we'll come back to the board in May, review it all, discuss it all, then bring it back in August for a final look and then look to the board to announce that in September. So this is just broad parameters. We're working on it. So any questions on the five-year financial report before we go on?
So last time we saw the five cast was in October.
Yes, October, yep.
How would you compare this presentation to that, a progressive, conservative, same?
Um, well, the biggest thing would be is, uh, the, of course, evidence-based funding is helping out, uh, we're getting more revenue there. Um, but as far as CPI, we actually decreased the CPI from that projection. Um, and there we were using, I think, 2.1 or 2.2, 2.1, I think it was, we ordered. The biggest was we had higher, uh, new growth. You remember, we were thinking that new growth was, uh, 67 million was going to continue uh, because of all the housing permits and et cetera. Well, that's, that turned out that was mostly that bump in commercial. So really, our true baseline is probably about that 50 million. But that's the single biggest adjustment within, and then that's on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, uh, pretty much the assumptions are pretty much all the same except for now that we've had a tighter look at our enrollment, we do have in there for a couple, two minus two teachers in 19 and minus three at 20. That's really the big changes in it since from October.
When will the 2017 new growth be finalized? When we have that as a real number?
April. So it should be by mid-April when they will finalize it for us. But I, the 51 some million, I doubt that's going to change much.
Yeah, but it changed from the estimate they gave us initially.
Yeah.
Or the fairly significant.
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll get that final number in April.
And then this five cast, does it include the need to fund the capital improvement?
Yes.
In the 10-year plan that we discussed at the last meeting.
Right.
About, so it, it does throw in the monies necessary out of operating.
Right.
Re-plunge the capital.
Right, so now we have two ways we can handle that going forward and that would be kind of a board discussion we can have during the budgeting process. We can, uh, transfer, because right now we have earmarked in there $3 million in O&M to.
You're getting one.
Huh?
You're getting one.
19, fiscal year 19. So we have that earmarked in there for that capital plan. We can either expend that capital plan out of O&M and just leave the money there, or we could transfer to 60 and then we could make those expenditures and then if something got delayed or whatever, will the money still there? Then whatever. So that would just be a board discussion we'll have during that budget process because we'll need to prepare the budget appropriately, you know, how we want to do that. So we'll, we'll bring back recommendation in May with the budget development. But yes, it includes $3 million starting in fiscal year 19 to make those ongoing repairs.
You mentioned, uh, refinancing the bonds. When would be earliest or is that anywhere on the horizon for us?
Well, it's on the horizon for me on one aspect and that is getting our rating higher. We have a, next week, a rating called Moody's and we're working on presentation now for them. And now that rating is back up in at least the A or, or double A, you know, we're, we're not really going to put a lot of energy in. Our energy right now is on daily operations and getting that rating up.
But having, to answer the question, you get the rating up, when is going to be the first opportunity to refinance the bond?
Oh, for? Uh, I would have to look at that. I don't have that off the top of my head, but it's a little bit out. So, but yes, there are some opportunities out there. We need to talk with, um, you know, the process would be, is I would first want to go through an RFP process. The board wanted to get that rolling, we could do it, but then we need to select, uh, an independent financial advisor who can just advise us only on how we should or shouldn't restructure and, uh, of course, not letting them have anything to do with underwriting. Should be completely separate. I think we should do a request for proposal, uh, for that service.
In, in the operating funds, I just, it just caught my eye. What was the, this may be too detailed of a question, so I apologize if I didn't get a chance to ask you that on that. Between fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20, there was a 4% bump in expenditures, but everything else was pretty steady at about 2, 2.5.
Right.
What, I mean, are you going to look at that?
Yeah, so, um, that's the bringing on of the $3 million to, to fund. And we've, we've been funding that out of, see, we, that would show up like that and we were looking at all funds.
Got it, okay.
You know, but when you isolate the operating, you see that 3 million, 3.7 million dollars have been in Fund 60, which is a reserve fund capital project, now that's why.
Again, I appreciate your efforts on this.
Oh, no problem.
It's the first time we did this to where we are now. I think that we're given different case scenarios. It, it's a, it's a better one.
And we will continue to get better and better with them. Okay, well then, I don't have my agenda in front of me, but I believe the next item was the, the, yes, so in your, um, information was this reconciliation for revenue and expenditures from the budget to, from 18 budget to 19 projections. This is what, well, the dollars we have in there for the 19 projections is where we feel comfortable on the revenue side, uh, where we think we will be hitting. And then if you flip it over to the expenditure side, you will see there the list of things that we need to, um, do to, um, bring together the fiscal year 19 budget. So we're going to be adding, and I apologize, uh, $2 million in capital projects. And then we have interest, uh, salary benefit increases of estimated about a million. And, you know, you've seen the list there. Those are the, uh, things that we would need to build into the 19 budget as we bring forward a detailed budget for the board's consideration in May. This is really just our big global building blocks. It's not like we're, you know, I personally don't feel like we need to vote on this. This is just getting it started. The board will officially vote on this as we bring together all the details and bring it back for, for your consideration. So this is where we like to start off and start building the budget.
So we, we're going to talk about security concerns next, I believe. Um, we, in this global view, are we having, are considering those, maybe additional costs in this model right here?
Well, it, yeah, it depends on which and where we go, but if we're talking about like some of the security access and some of that stuff, you know, that is already built into, yes.
I'm talking, like, is it some, something, or is there something along those lines?
Yes, yes, they're built in, and we will discuss that.
Okay. I just didn't want to see this and jump ahead and, I'm hoping it'll all change in a few weeks. And the talent interest expense, that's going down because of the interest rate assumed?
What is that? Oh, yeah, the TAW interest? Yes, that's going down, uh, because by the time we had the, we already had the budget set before we negotiated our TAWs this last time. It's actually going down, went down for 18, but we had already set the budget before we negotiated that. So as you know, um, we got a substantially better rate on our TAWs this year. Um, so that's why that's, that's going down for 19. Okay, well, the important thing about this is that this is just the big building blocks. We will bring back the actual individual detailed budget for the board as we move along. We'll be back in May and then, uh, we're looking for final adoption in September.
Appreciate you guys' time. So, could, maybe a quick switch over? Thank you, sir. Just, just to keep me on track. Okay, um, we did provide some, some backup materials in the packet. I apologize, mostly this was placed today after we held our meeting this morning. So, so first of all, we did hold a Security Committee meeting there this morning. The participants in the meeting were the three building principals, the three associate principals, Director of Personnel, Director of Buildings and Grounds, Deputy Litgau, our School Resource Officer, Lieutenant Hayes, who is Will County Lieutenant, who oversees our resource officers, as well oversees the SWAT teams in Will County, or Member Lulo and myself. This is a superintendence committee that.
This is a superintendent's committee that came out of the strategic planning. These meetings, because we're dealing with internal security, are not open to the public. These were the members who attended today, and I'm going to go through some of the items that were discussed that are able to be discussed in public. To start off, we'll reference Policy 4.170, which is our operational services, our safety policy. In here, all district operations shall be conducted in a manner that will provide the safety and security of everyone on district property. We've cut and paste that policy for you in your backup materials. So as we begin, what is currently in place? We have plans for emergencies in all three of our schools. So in addition to three fire drills and one severe weather drill, the schools conduct an active shooter drill that is coordinated with our first responders. There is a debrief and review at the conclusion of that year. Each year, adjustments are made. That plan, those plans continue to evolve as more information becomes available. Ron Lulo was able to attend this past fall at Lincoln Way Central to witness that, that drill. Will County is always involved in that drill. Often, we have Frankford involved at Lincoln Way East, and Lennox involved here at Central and at West. We discussed the use of panic buttons in our, in our meeting today. Panic buttons are located in each, each classroom. This is a two-way communication. Someone hits the buzzer in the classroom, immediately, one of the office staff picks up the phone, "Can I help you?" The response is, "I have a student who's fainted, I have this, I have that." At that point, we have immediate access to the intercom to make an announcement. Now, we talked about the scenarios today. One that could be an office scenario. Teacher hits the panic button, "Yes, can I help you?" I see a man with a gun outside of room 200. The announcement is immediately made, "There's a man with a gun outside of room 200. The building is now in rock down." Further discussion today, we were given the instruction from Will County, say as much as you can on that announcement. There is a man outside, he is wearing a gray, there's a man outside room 200 in a gray sweatshirt. The police have been called, they're on their way. With that, the more notification, the more likely that person may be to flee, or in the scenario that was given to us this morning, take their rewind. So we discussed the messaging to the teachers and the student response. The police would be en route. Now, in my time as superintendent, we've had a couple of situations that have involved our first responders. We had one at Lincoln Way Central, where an individual was seen walking towards the building, someone called 911 feeling that they had saw, they had seen a shiny object, and the person sitting there appeared to be a doctor. New Lennox was here immediately. Their response was immediate. Will County was right behind. All officers were in the building, prepared to do their jobs. I have no doubt that they were willing to risk their own lives to save lives of our students. We had a situation at Lincoln Way East a couple of years ago, where we had an active threat during the school day. Same scenario. Will County deputies were inside our building, in the hallways. Will County deputies were outside, monitoring the entire exterior based upon the possibility of that threat. Their diligence and their commitment, you know, there's no question, they were there to do their jobs, and so for that, I'm very grateful. Our response time of our officers in these communities has been excellent in the two instances that we've had to make those calls. We continue to utilize Raptorware and hold identification of individuals who come into our buildings. So if you come in, as mentioned this evening, we run the ID, we run the background check, they get a sticker, they get a lanyard, they can come to our buildings, we hold on to the ID, when they come back, they sign out, we give them that card. Now, some discussion today going forward. There was discussion of cameras. We have cameras throughout our buildings. We have cameras stationary on the doors that have locks, lock access to enter our, our buildings. But we have discussion of would we, would we be able to grant access to Will County through our firewalls if they were en route, if they were at the station? The lieutenant and, and the deputy Hillary believe that it's most effective if they're able to utilize our camera system while in their vehicles. They all have laptops in their vehicles. So we're looking for ways with our provider to determine if that is a viable option. We know we can likely get it to, to the landline. We have to make sure that by doing this with two or three users at the same time, it wouldn't slow the system down. If they were to come into our buildings in an emergency, they would likely go to the main office point of contact and begin to utilize that equipment. But there could be a benefit to have, them having that in their cars. Now, it's important to note, every Will County deputy has blueprints of all of our schools in their squad cars on their computer. They're able to pull it up immediately as they're listening. Door nine, door nine. They're looking at their map, they're seeing door nine, that they know where to enter. So that, that is in place. Over the summer, at the last board meeting, our board approved a capital projects, capital projects plan that would include secure entrances. So this will be done over the summer or sooner. We're in the pre-construction meetings now, we're seeing if we could have some of this work done prior to completion, for the conclusion of the school year. So we'll do what we can do. These will be camered, secure entrances in all three buildings, such as you see in our grade schools. Buzz through, camera, "Can I help you?", "Give a reason", "Come to the next door." Now, the procedures have been developed, but we're finalizing the details in terms of who gets through the door, who doesn't. At this point, you have to have an appointment or have a reason. If a student's sick, the nurse calls the main office. Billy's sick, the parent's on the way. Parent calls in ahead of time to say, "I'm going to pick up Joey for the work of the dimes." So we're finalizing those details, and we'll have those in place for the start of the next school year. In addition to our secure entrances, there will be access controls to all outside entrances of our building, and then other specific parts of our building. These will be swipe cards. Swipe cards can be activated and deactivated. You can't deactivate a key. Once you have the key, you have the key, and, and so the all exterior, exterior entrances will be only accessed through our swipe cards. That will help to secure our building. The next one is restricted use and restricted access. That was the first thing that was discussed at the meeting, and everyone was in agreement. This is not only a safety concern, but also liability concern. The district is responsible for the individuals while they're in the building. You know, the administration is prepared to move forward with limiting the access to community members during the school day, during times when students are present. We still have swim hour availability in the evenings. We have park district lap walking available in the evenings. So the administration would be prepared to move forward with limiting access throughout the school day. I believe in plan, in, in the board policies of 4170, the administration is to develop those plans. I, over the next couple of weeks, will be in conversation with board members to, you know, we didn't have time to do this at the meeting yesterday, but we'll have discussions individually. And, but at this point, the administration would be prepared to move forward to, to limit the access, particularly based upon the discussions with law enforcement and the administration in the meeting today. In just a minute, we're going to begin to discuss that. The other, the other item that came out of our meeting today, and this is something the principals have been working on, is monitor student entrances before the start of school. We all know we have a number of doors for our buildings. And so we are in the process of going down to three doors in the morning. We would set the time that those doors are open in the morning, and then they would be monitored by staff. You know, we still want freedom of movement. We still want our students to feel, feel safe. And I, and I think that by working to close certain doors, restrict certain access, that's one way to tighten up our security a little prior to the start of school. So that's something that, that in Friday morning meeting tomorrow, we'll finalize, we'll get schedules out, and that's something we can start by the way. A little bit on prevention. I attached the principal's letters that had been sent home or will be sent home. And then we have a new reporting tool. We've had the bullying form on our website for quite some time now. That bullying form is now a bully forum, school safety forum. And, and so it's something that, I don't know if I'm going to do it, probably won't. But it is, it's accessible, it's on our website, it's up and running. And it's something that we will be sharing with our students, and the link will be sent home to the parents. It has drop-down boxes of what their concern may be. It includes suicide, threat of harm to others, threat of harm to school bullying. Those emails, when that's submitted, that email goes immediately to the principal, the associate principals, and also the director of PPS. So there will be four individuals that get that email. Our individuals check their email regularly. We will be able to respond immediately. Now, Mr. Crawford found it. So there is Lincoln Way bullying safety report, and that's something that, as I said, will be shared with parents and with students in the upcoming days. Okay, a lot to cover. Any questions or thoughts? Because I know around you, you've been very involved in that.
First off, other concern. Mrs. O'Shea, I definitely heard what you were saying. Also received some emails and some phone calls from some people. Back in 2006, this was the literature that was put out to the public saying, "If you endorse and allow us to use the schools, we'll support the referendum." And I understand a lot of that was sold to you by former administration. The downside of it is, looking through statistics from January 2006 to today, did a Google search, there was 180 school shootings. Times have changed, and we have an obligation to the entire community, but to the 7,000 or so students, the 850 teachers and support staff. And not that the 75 to 100 or so people that used the facilities throughout the day, non-school related, are important. Real obligation, I think, to the masses. And decisions are never easy. Someone always benefits, someone, if you will, loses. But I think it's something we really have to consider in, unfortunately, the time and age in which we live in.
So let's talk a little bit about that. You mentioned that, did prior to the referendum, was the, the community have access to the schools?
Well, it takes me a long way back. I know in the nineties they did. And when the field houses were completed, I know that we allowed our residents to walk through the field house, because I remember coaching at the time, and the fear of if the ball goes bouncing and somebody goes after it, that people could be injured or harmed. So I, I know it was early, it was 1996, there was walking in the field house, because that was prior to the school.
So this has been kind of a practice of the district for over 20 years?
Correct.
So how, how did that come into being? Was it just somebody snuck in and started walking on the track one day?
I, that predates me. Can you, can you do some research?
I can't. Because I think, you know, I agree with everything Ron said. I totally agree with him. But before we do anything, I think we need to fully vet how we got to what we're doing.
And I know, I know back in the, if it started in the eighties or nineties, it was prior to what was during.
I have to, oh, I'm the first one to tell you that we're in a, we live in a different world. I would respectfully disagree with you. I would say that if we allow unrestricted access. Now, if we want to reopen it, we can always reopen it, but, but just continuing to let things operate the way they are, allowing people to come in with bags, walking around while students are, I think is not too prudent. So, but that I would say. Um, you mentioned, Ron, there was a number of, how many people do you use? Is that?
Two or, two or a hundred.
So we, on a daily basis or?
Yeah, district-wide daily basis, we're at, we're at about 15 to 20 per building. You know, and that's, that's, that's a number the principals had given.
You mentioned liability. What is the liability?
Liability, if, if anything were to happen to those individuals while they're.
Those individuals.
So citizens, community members, something happens to a community member, that's on us, in our buildings, it's on our time. Certainly, if a community member or any individual coming through within to do any harm or damage, once again, I think that liability would be on us. You know, my, my fear, and we've discussed this, is always, as we have members of our community walking, you know, that's when athletic contests are going on, big kids running around, it's always been a fear that injuries would occur. We've been very fortunate. We did have a lady hit with a softball this morning. You know, they're, they're running the track while they're taking grounders. I wish our kids would catch every one, but they messaged me, and one, one did hit one of our walkers this morning. And, you know, so we, something did, something considers it.
Does there are insurance care, you know, that we allow access? Is that something that you're aware of?
They do, they do.
What do they say about it?
We, we haven't ever done something to see if that would be a cost savings or anything.
But the people were covered?
It would be covered by our insurance. We'd still pay the deductible, not data. Yeah, it's no different than people attending a softball or basketball game, you have hundreds of thousands throughout the year.
All right, so I'm a little confused. So, but have you any optus here? So is this a policy, or is this an administration decision?
If, if you read the policy itself, the policy designates the superintendent for designated development, who would retain a safety and security plan included throughout the nation in all the emergency. So the way I would read this is that it's up to the administration. Administration determine what that safety and security policy would be. There is a policy that restricts use of organizations and groups during the school time, but it does not state citizens or individuals. It's outside groups, organizations, not be done during school time. So we, while not allow groups or organizations here during school time, individuals have been allowed. And this policy is.
So we could amend that policy to include individuals?
Could amend that policy to include individuals, correct.
That might be a thing you're.
That, that would be, that would be.
Although this says prevention of, of emergency operations and addressing prevention.
Correct.
So preventing emergency situations.
Speaking with the principals, speaking with our SROs, having individuals walking around the building with bags during time of school for their, as their concern, and that was the discussion this morning. As I said, I apologize, we didn't have time to discuss, to discuss that.
So this was an information one?
This was an information.
So what information am I leaving here tonight with?
Tonight? Well, I would think it'd be fair for me to communicate with the board members between now and our next meeting. We know all the individuals that use our facilities on an everyday basis. The recommendation, the security committee, the recommendation of the three principals would be for us to restrict the use during time, during time the students are present. That's what I would, that's what, that's what I would like to do. Now, certainly not going to go against the wishes of board members, but at the same time, I do believe the policy in, in reading today, will allow the administration that opportunity to do so. Certainly then, discussions can be had in terms of moving forward. At this point, we have two weeks before our next meeting. We can leave things as is for two weeks as we continue to discuss this. We can review the policy eight point, was it 12, 2.0, 8.20 in terms of individuals. But that's certainly something we can do. We know the individuals that are currently using our, our facilities. We could restrict any additional usage during that time. But at the same time, we would be comfortable saying, "Let's take a two-week break and come back and see where, see where we can beat them to the end."
You say restrict additional uses, you're saying only allow those folks that.
That have already signed up and gone through Raptorware. Yes, yes. So we're talking about, as I said, 15 to 20 per building. We have nearly 7,000 students. And, and my responsibility is to do 7,000 students, as, as we, as we worked through this today. So my, my opinion would be to move forward and restrict access to the building during school hours. We provide swim hours in the evening. We provide park district opportunities starting at 6 o'clock in all of our buildings. There's still the, the opportunity. There's still the, the opportunity to utilize our facility.
I don't mean...
Yeah, no, go ahead, go ahead, I understand, I understand.
First of all, when did the floor decision occur? So why did this happen on February 15th?
We scheduled, we scheduled the meeting, we scheduled for yesterday. So it's a timing issue, as I said, we've been waiting two weeks. That's when everyone was able to get a place.
We're also missing a decent chunk of our board tonight, for a variety of reasons. I'm not being critical of that at all, I can appreciate that. But, I think that this is a delicate subject.
It's very delicate.
I am all for not putting a single person at risk period. You and I have had it...
Yeah, absolutely.
The day that it's occurred, we've got to warn them. I just, I'm struggling with this, is trying to figure out if we've fully vetted, what other options may be available if we decide to suspend. And I don't feel we've done that at this point.
Other options, meaning?
I don't know, maybe there's a preregistration type of a scenario, or something else that can occur that would allow it to be maintained in some sense. Not, maybe not necessarily during the school day. Or before, I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, it's...
Like, today.
Sure did, absolutely.
And so, you know, I was under the impression it was going to be an informational discussion.
Yeah.
Not a change in practice. And I'm still not sure who can change the practice either.
Mr. President? As much as I respect you and Mr. Kennedy, when you guys are talking financial, on that your profession, for 35 years, both in public and private sector, this is my forte. And if we follow what's already in place, because we can't take action items, because it's not in the agenda, but if we follow what's in place for the next two weeks until March 15th, if we were wrong or remiss in this, nothing really has changed, if they miss two weeks, or just temporarily suspending it until we come to the next board meeting, or hopefully more here.
But we are not doing any...
The policy's already in place, we don't have to do anything.
Right, that's my, I guess that's my point. You said "we," I want to research, I just think, "we" you're referring to.
Well, what I'm saying is, we don't, all we have to do is adhere to the policy that's already in place, follow what's there, and if we do that, then we can restrict, if we want to, we change it. If we want to, but if we want to amend eight point two zero and do, then we can do that at the 15th, once we've got it, and once we have a formal discussion.
So then, so your point is, I guess, thank you for your conversation, but...
Okay.
I appreciate it.
So, you're saying we have a policy in place, the administration follows the policy, that that's, it is what it is?
So then, Mr. Kennedy, so you're basically saying the administration was violating the policy, where the administration has the ability to take action within the policy?
I didn't say that.
No, I don't, that's, I put it in the...
Nobody knows what you're saying.
So, it wasn't, they have the ability to take additional action because of the policy?
Absolutely. It's in writing, so yes.
Okay. Again, I just, just saw, so. And then, two weeks from now, we would come back to do what?
Well, if eight point two zero is two weeks, and we need to tighten it up, then we're the action, we need it on an update or a better definition of that policy. And then if it is, then we could vet that and say, "We're the action, we need to do." But if not, then we could just leave everything as is and move forward.
There is no policy, there is no policy that allows access to the buildings. It's not, there is no more policy that says this is going to happen. If you have an agreement with all our purchasers, this allows community usage.
Here end of the discussion.
May I ask a question about the form that Dr. Tingle put up? Can I do that now?
Please.
Um, I appreciate the form and what you're trying to do with it. I have a junior at East who has been having pretty extensive conversations with us at home ever since Valentine's Day, and among her peers and other kids I've heard discussing the see something, say something policy, I have sort of, two things. What happens if they see something and say something, and this is reported? What's going to happen? I know two examples, one at West, where my understanding, wasn't on the inside, is because something was seen and said, action was taken, and quite probably, something prevented from happening. But, I know myself, in talking with other community members, there's been incidents at Central and at East, where maybe action hasn't been taken, things have been swept under the carpet, there's been no communication to the parents when the buildings have been surrounded by police. So, I guess my question is twofold. What's your thought process about what will happen with these forms? And are you going to have a policy going forward in communicating with parents when there is a concern, or even an incident with police presence at the schools?
And, first of all, in terms of sweeping under the rug, it has never happened anywhere. Every time a report has been made, every single time a report's been made...
I mean with the parents.
Every time a report has been made, it has been investigated by our administration in conjunction with our resource officers. Whenever there has been a threat made against the district, made against students, made against anyone, parents have been notified. Whenever a threat was made, whenever it was...
Not last year.
You can shake your head, ma'am, I'm telling you, every time something has occurred where a threat was made, something was in writing, something was on Facebook, something was seen, it has been communicated with parents.
Well, I'm a parent, and I wasn't communicated. I communicated with the principal, because I made a phone call, but there was no communication in mass.
So, I guess to answer your question, every time we receive one of those reports, it will be absolutely investigated to even to the nth degree. We receive emails from students occasionally, administrators receive emails from students, they act upon those immediately. They call their parents, if there's a, if there's a child in danger or harm, our administration is excellent at following through on such items.
And obviously, I appreciate your comments. We did kind of break protocol here, so if you want to carry that conversation on...
Thank you, I appreciate it.
That's obviously one that you need some additional.
I appreciate it.
One more, sorry, go ahead.
I appreciate the things that you are already putting in place, especially having a conversation about what to do after a pin button is pushed, and disseminating that information that could have an impact on the safety of students. I'm wondering, why would we wait if we could tomorrow start monitoring the student entrances and only having three doors open?
That's something that's already been restarted. Where are we on? Did you forget my product out at the meeting?
Okay.
Some things that's needed, that we'll have to kick off from the...
Does it have to wait till the summer to make the main entrance?
We're at great construction meetings right now, and so, to be honest, the Central and East, where there'll be quite a bit of work, we don't know that that will be possible, because of the deal with electricity, ground wires knocking down walls, and those conversations we'll be having with the construction company.
The good news is, that's already in process, so regardless if it happens this summer or this spring. One more question, please go ahead.
I have two questions.
Two more questions.
Okay, I know you guys mentioned about Raptorware, going through background checks for those people. What about volunteers or former students who are coming back to help out? Are they going to also be checked on? Because, you know, we're just going to assume that you're a parent, you're good to...
Our volunteers, assistant coaches, the life, they go through the background check for us.
What about parent volunteers?
Parent volunteers, if they're spending the night and they're showering, yes.
Because I, I mean like, when we went to Summit Hill, we had to go through the check, background check as well, because we were coming in the building. So I'm wondering if that's the same thing? So, is...
Yes, if they're in a supervisor capacity, we do.
No, as long as you come in the building, it's like, to come and help in any event?
I don't know that we have parents come and help us.
Yes, I do, I do. I help those that are going to get...
You're right, they probably don't go through the background.
They should, right? Don't you think they should? Look, okay, yes. Second question.
Fine.
North, I was walking the other day, and I noticed that the gates to the football field was locked. Can I ask why? Because there's no kids around?
That would, that would have to go to the Park Square Park District, because I don't know...
Park District?
Yeah.
Okay. I could ask him. The only thing was like, I'm a law-abiding citizen, so I didn't walk, I looked at the gates, it was locked, fine, walked away. Minutes later, like, people are in the field, how the heck did they get in there? So, after I walked by, I saw they tried to do the gates open, they squeezed through. These were adults who squeezed through, but I was like, what happens if some reckless kids, and they climb the fence, and they get injured? Then, who's going to die?
That's a good point.
So, something to think about.
Yep.
You know, that's all.
Appreciate your dialogue, I mean, this is obviously a very, very important topic.
Because you guys can be everywhere, so we have your eyes and ears as well.
The security subject is one that, as you can see, I mean, Ron, thank you, that's all I can say, is we're very, we're very fortunate to have you as a member on this board, period, but especially during this time, because I know I've had conversations with you that have enlightened me as to how to go about this, and so, I appreciate your opportunity, but this is, this will be a dialogue that'll have to continue. This is not going to be solved in one meeting, if it can be solved in a series of meetings, and as we've found, it's regrettable, then we have to plan for the unthinkable. And, but yet, we have to remember who we are as well, because this is us, and we got to be true to us as well, obviously. That's my only cautionary tale for that, is that, we keep that in mind. This has been great dialogue, and I've learned tonight, so thank you. All right, is there any other business to close? If not, there's no reason to go and close session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. The motion is for a second. Can all those papers, if by the same eye? Anyone opposed?